Call the meeting of county council order, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience as we wrap up from our caucus. First is an optional prayer invocation from Mrs. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us ponder Memorial Day. As Robert O'Neil, a retired U.S. Navy SEAL stated, "As fate would have it, I now find myself a unique set of circumstances, and I am determined to use the platform I have been given to achieve a greater good." I am standing on the shoulders of giants, those who served before me, those whom I have served, and those who are serving now. I would not be where I am today if I weren't for them, and I will never forget that. We as a nation should never forget, and why the fight for freedom must continue, never forget the challenge veterans faces in the effort to raise awareness. We ask good God to look after the souls of these people who served, and veterans from across the country. Without them, we would be without the peace, freedoms, and privileges we enjoy as Americans. It is the soldier who has given all of this to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, at this time, I'd ask for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just ask everyone here tonight to join in with me at the passing of Donald Morosky last week on May 17th. His nephew, John Steiner, as everyone knows, is a close friend of mine, is here this evening. Duck was like a second father to John, and an uncle to many of us that grew up in that Lower East Side neighborhood. And he died peacefully at his home, where he was born on May 17th, 2018. His family living in that neighborhood, and raising their families in that neighborhood, and all of the pleasures that he had in life, particularly those times that he spent with his family, and his children and grandchildren in particular, and many nieces and nephews. He leaves behind beloved wife, Amy, and several children. And we council members have said, now therefore, we members of councils are saddened by the passing of Donald Duck Morosky, who toiled for the Erie Streets Department for 40 years, and worked with many of the younger workers to train them, and take them under his wing, in making the city a better place. He took time for his family and friends, and left this world much too early, but those whom he touched in this world are forever better for his smile, his humor, his honesty, and his love. Please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Faust?
Here. Next is a presentation of citation to Breanna Adams, and Mrs. Fatika will do the honors for that.
Dr. Faust, thank you for letting me do this. Everybody knows the Department of Health is near and dear to my heart, as retiree, a public health nurse. And there's so much dedication and leadership throughout the department, and it means a lot to the health and welfare of the citizens of Erie County. But it means something special when nationally, and a Department of Health person is recognized. So I'm just going to ask Brianna and Karen, come on up. Now Melissa, the Director of the Department of Health, had an opportunity to speak at the national meeting when Brianna got this award. So before I talk, I'm going to let her supervisor, Karen Tobin, have say a few words about the work.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Karen Tobin. I'm the Director of the Environmental Division at the Health Department. And Brianna Adams is an Environmental Protection Specialist with our department. Brianna is brilliant. She is an exemplary employee. She has only been with us for a few years at the department, but she has been a leader from the very beginning. Every committee, every project, she's always a volunteer. She steps up, she's a leader. She's very comfortable in making decisions, coming up with creative new ideas, joining committees, starting up our social media and media relations teams. She's very involved in the department, but she's also involved in the community. She does a lot for the church that she belongs to, the community, her neighborhood, with the parks that she's had opportunities to obtain grants for. So I'm very proud of her. When we became aware of this opportunity through the, I have to say this, read this so I get this right, the National Network of Public Health Institutes came out with a series of awards. We immediately thought of Brianna for the Rising Star Award, someone who's, you know, new to public health but is yet shining right off the bat. There were over 700 people nationally nominated for the few awards that they gave out, and Brianna won one of those, the Rising Star Award. So it really is something to be recognized at a national level. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, but I really thank Brianna for working for us in the Health Department and doing so much for us and for the community. Thank you.
I'm just going to read a little bit here. Whereas Ms. Adams conducted national research and sought input from local tattoo artists to revise and update department regulations, developed a database to track tick submittals, and assisted in writing grants to help obtain funding for the tick awareness campaign, and was an integral part of neighborhood beautification efforts, including the department's participation in the rain barrel program called "Don't Give Up the Drip," also the creation of a pollinator garden in the department's campus, and in organizing the neighborhood cleanup with participation of the staff. Now, therefore, we, the undersigned members of Erie County Council, hereby join a grateful citizenry to honor our own Brianna Adams for her commitment to excellence, pursuance of professional development, and to improving the performance and understanding of the department's services in the Erie community.
I would just like to say I'm very honored and very humbled to be here. It's been a whirlwind of a week. We went to the national conference this past week in New Orleans, so we're glad it was last week and not while it's raining. Well, Karen said I've worked at the department for six years, so I started when I was 23. I have a science background, and so it's funny to be at a national public health conference and hear all these people talking about their roots in public health, and how important it is to our whole community, and to just realize how much I went from just being a restaurant inspector, which is pretty cool in itself, to more of the tick and tattoo person. And now, since I, when I started, I was one of the youngest people, and I said, well, I could do the Facebook, I like doing that stuff. And now I'm co-chairing our media team. So I know that myself and other county employees as well, we can be the best salespeople for all the good that we do through the county, for our community. So I'm super humbled to be honored for that, and enjoy being able to work here, and appreciate the leadership in my department and the county overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again, and continued success to you. Next is a hearing of the public. It doesn't look like Mr. Brundell is here, but second will be Mr. Barnes, who did call in ahead of time, but we just were not able to get him on the agenda, so he will have a full five minutes tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Randy Barnes. I reside in Dr. Faust's district, and recently the ECRA was in the news. And about a year ago, about a year ago, I was also interested in how ECRA operated, because I thought there was maybe room for improvement. And so I guess I kind of put that aside, but since it was in the news again, I thought I'd ask, and maybe I'm a little late, but a year ago, the board voted, well, I think the board voted to change the wording from "tuition reimbursement," a month later, they called it "professional development," because the word was, "We aren't going to do any more tuition reimbursement." So I challenge one of you council members to find the notes from the board meeting, who voted, who proposed that we change the language from "tuition reimbursement" for the fall semester in March, which makes sense. You get your grades, you submit it, you get reimbursed. In the private sector, that's how it works. And then a month later, we tell the public, "We aren't going to do that anymore," but we cut a check for "professional development." So we saying that we, the board voted, and a majority said, you know what, let's deceive the public, let's call it something else. Because maybe there's even tax implications, because if you get over $5 grand a year, that's a W-2 incident. That's on your W-2. But maybe if you call it professional development, maybe that's not a taxable item. But it bothers me a lot. It did a year ago, and I thought, well, things are going to change. Far as I know, we're still paying $1,400 a month to have an office in the Knowledge Park, plus expenses, $600, $700 a month communications, doing internet and phones for three people. The water cooler, got to have a water cooler. Got to have a water cooler. Can't drink city water. We're the ECRA gaming board. We get water. Our taxpayers pay for our water, not that city water. I often said, if someone else passed to pay for your membership to something, you probably don't belong there. How many of you are paid by the county for the Pennsylvania Society membership? I'm going to think all of you get it, right? Well, it's only taxpayer money, and when we pay for this Director, Mr. Wood, we pay for his fee. I think one of you tonight should make a motion that all of you get your Pennsylvania Society membership paid for, because there's a luncheon next week here. It's only taxpayer money, what's the difference? What has changed in the past year? Have any of you looked at the check registers in the past six months? Are we still going to the Six Pack place on Buffalo Road for lunch every other day? We still going to Starbucks, getting $3 coffees and charging it, have the taxpayers pay? You probably all have a credit card, right? And when you go to Starbucks on your way in, you charge it to the county, right? Come on, don't smile at me, I know you got one of those, right? Okay, I know you don't. Because if you're an elected official, you're supposed to watch out for the taxpayer money. It says something about the board, it says something about the director, it says something about all those people want to overlook this, because their hands are out. When the biggest vocal people supporting ECRA, employer gets, has benefited by millions of dollars from the ECRA board, directly and indirectly. Watch and see who those big supporters are, and you look back and see, follow the money.
You still have about 45 seconds.
Is that four minutes or five? I still got one more? Thank you. But again, you know, could I do a better job? Probably not, but I would be honest. I wouldn't go to my board, because I'm assuming these board members were part of this, and if they were part of this, there's even a bigger problem. If the board, this wasn't on the board agenda, to change the wording, to deceive the public, then you guys got a problem. I want to know which one of you on here want to dig up those board minutes? Nobody does, right? It's too sensitive. I can turn in the right to no request, so it kind of absolves all of you. I mean, I don't think any of you want to be the one that says, "I got Barnes' minutes."
Randy, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public wish to be heard? If you have not called in ahead of time to get on the agenda, you will have three minutes. If you could, at the beginning, just give your name and the municipality you live in, and then you'll go from there.
Art Leopold, I'm in Milcrick, 16506. Honored council ladies and councilmen, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I want to thank you, first of all, I noticed on the agenda, Second Reading Ordinance Number 45. It's a very critical issue to allow more people that are looking for a second chance to get a second chance, and I thank you very much for your support. Second reading means this should become an ordinance here pretty quick, and I do appreciate your support. The main reason I speak this evening is there's a ZIP code not too far from here, where 47% of our citizens, our community members, are in poverty. This has lasted a long time, and it happens to be one of the ZIP codes that has the highest poverty rate in the state. I've been at this a long time, I know you've been at it a long time, but I want to suggest to you that there are tools that have been used to raise people up. There are tools in over 85 communities in this country that have been used to raise people up. And we're looking at a resolution that's come before you this evening that has the opportunity to do that. I rise in support of Resolution Number 44, Community Benefit Agreement Language, and project funding under the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program. This is vital, not only for the state, but for our county and for our city. I personally have talked before many authorities, the City Council, several dozen times. I've spoken before County Council in support of this, and I again rise in support of this CBA and this resolution. And I want you to give it serious consideration. Thank you very much. I have letters of support, and also some petitions for you. Who gets those?
You can give those to our clerks.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Attefer. I live in the city of Erie. Is there anything else I'm supposed to say?
No, that's good enough.
I'm fortunate. My grandparents left Eastern Europe, my Jewish grandparents, by the beginning of the 20th century, so they lived. My parents were not restricted from obtaining a mortgage in Brooklyn, New York because of their race, and therefore, my father was able to accumulate some wealth, and I was able to go to college and have a career. I am concerned that not everybody in our society, in our culture, in our town, in our county, in our state, has had those advantages. One way to try and change that is by using the leverages that the state, the county, and the city have to get developers to help raise the income levels of all members of our community. That leverage is the R cap. That leverage is how we issue building permits. This resolution that the county is asked to approve today addresses the structure of the R cap. We need to increase the leverage, perhaps the criteria, when priorities are being made as to which entity should get the R caps that they have applied for, based on what is the actual benefit to the entire community, not just whether we're going to put up an eight-story hotel and give the developer an R cap, but what is, how is the entire community going to develop, benefit from that development? So the state, the county, the city needs more tools to increase their leverage, to motivate our developers, our businesses, to continue to support development in the city, but in a way that benefits all of our citizens. So I urge you to support this resolution that Councilmember Horton has brought before you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, council. My name is Lisa Austin, and I too live in the city of Erie. I wanted to start just by commenting on Brianna Adams. I want to congratulate you. This is really exciting to know that you've got that national award. It's pretty impressive. You're competing with 700 others. That's really something. I also wanted just to dovetail into the idea, though, that from the Public Health Department, I think that we think of it normally as keeping people from toxins, and keep people exercising, and eating right, and all that, and away from, you said you did restaurant inspections, so you want to make sure that people don't get sick when they go out to eat. But I think another aspect of public health is certainly having hope, having agency over your life, having feeling that you can get a job and make your way in the world. And what I think is really important tonight is that this particular resolution that's being put before you, 44 dot 2018, that this is a crucial opportunity for the government to get involved in encouraging the creation of jobs. Now, again, it's not a direct creation, but creating the opportunity, and having some of the development money come back into the pockets of the local people who really need opportunity for employment. And I wanted to close by mentioning that, if you don't already know about it, that Karen Abrams will be at the Jefferson Educational Society this week for a free talk. It's at 7:00 or 7:30, you do need to call for reservation, but she's going to be addressing some of the issues in response to the really sad national exposure that we got last year in November as the worst city for Black Americans. She's going to be addressing how we as a community can start to address some of those things, and I'll bet that she thinks a community benefit agreement might be a step in the right direction. Thank you tonight.
Thank you. We'll get to everybody, too. You don't have to worry. If you want to be heard tonight, we'll make sure you get heard. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Anne McCarthy, Sister Anne McCarthy, I'm Benedictine Sister, and I live in the city of Erie on 22nd Street. And I just wanted to say that Benedictines for Peace and many other grassroots people have been involved in study sessions around the community benefit agreements, and we are very much in support of that, and support of those, and in support of this Resolution 44 point 2018 in particular. We do think that they will be an important vehicle for social justice, and we do know that Erie has the distinction, we learned last November, from 24/7 Wall Street, and we should say it, that Erie is the worst city in the country for African-Americans. That isn't something that happened in the recent time, it's been building over decades. We need a vehicle that provides opportunity and provides the people-to-people engagement that builds trust. The community benefit agreements is a vehicle, we believe, that will do that. So we're very much in support of this, very happy that we can be here tonight to express that support, and we think that this resolution in particular furthers that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name is Veronica Rexford. I'm a county resident, and I work in the city. Inclusive recovery in cities is critical. The Urban Institute did a report just out this year that talked about inclusive recovery in cities, and Erie is on the cusp as an opportunity to really look at, how do we make a recovery? How do we make development inclusive? I support inclusive and equitable development because, as the city goes, so goes the county. The population of our community is in a general decline, other than new Americans and minorities, who are keeping the city's population just over the 100,000-person mark. Often, developers and the bodies that approve their projects subscribe to the theory that a rising tide will lift all boats. But the Urban Institute's report tells us, and I will send it to you, that in order for economic recovery driven by development to be inclusive or to lift all boats, it requires a deliberate commitment to inclusivity. We are at a crossroads, and I believe that attaching community benefits agreements to R cap funds and/or other concessions by taxing bodies to large developments is an opportunity to make redevelopment in our city inclusive and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to be heard tonight?
Welcome. The president, councilmembers, Ed Kissel, city of Erie. I'd like to bring up on page 2H the possible adoption of a resolution in support of the expansion of emergency care, which I believe all of you know, we called it the RELCO system back in the late 50s and 60s, whereby the light would blink, freeing the traffic to move, and the ambulances, fire engines, police could go through those intersections in a safer mode. It has been revitalized, and PennDOT has taken it under their wing also, and have installed systems from Robinson Road down to Cherry and Peach Street. They've gone across 26th Street with 14 systems, from the thruway over to 26th and Holland. They upgraded the old system, but the new system is available in those. 38th Street from Old French Road over to, I believe, Rice Avenue has been updated. The city has a plan that was worked on back in about 2013. This has been going on quite a while. The city did the actual study, the county did a study on a number of boxes that are on the telephone poles, so a lot of the groundwork has been laid for the system to move forward. Phil Fatika was instrumental in it, a number of other legislators, mostly the board was instrumental on getting that passed. In fact, you did a Resolution 18 of 2013 in support of the funding sources for the RELCO system. So I ask your support on that resolution, to move it forward, for all to enjoy, no political lines, from the unborn to the dying, that system would work and help at least the people who need it get to the hospital in a timely manner. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Gary Horton. I stand to support Councilman Horton's resolution to attach or to introduce CBAs, or community benefit agreements, into our area. The NAACP Adult and the NAACP Youth Branch recently, at their last Thursday meeting, also passed similar resolutions in support of that. We believe that the individual investment in the sum total of all the collective investment has not lifted the boats of the poor people. It hasn't even given them hope. So we can't keep doing things the way they have been done. I remember when I last came to this body, I was advocating the introduction of summer jams or summer jobs program for young people. We were first told it couldn't be done, then we were told there wasn't any money, but if you look at the young people and the families that have benefited from the action that you took, we're asking you to take the same kind of bold step today. We're standing in the middle of extreme poverty and unimaginable wealth, and there's nothing to bring those two components together. When we come to government and ask for assistance, we're often told we don't have the funding to do that. A CBA will not hurt business. It will not hurt government, but it will seed or nurture the hopes of the everyday people who are just looking. We are asking them to pull yourself up by your own bootstraps. We don't have bootstraps. We're looking to government to give us some. We believe that CBAs will provide that opportunity. They work all across the country. They haven't chased any corporation that wanted to do business out of a community, and they've given people in those communities hope and opportunity. So I would encourage you, in this community where just the status quo is not So I would encourage you, in this community where just the status quo is not sustainable, we've got to try something else. And I say, what's wrong with giving Community Benefit Agreements or CBAs the opportunity to work in our community like they have across the country? I've been a part of a community-wide effort that has studied these. When the twenty-four-seven Wall Street article came out about the perception or the reality of this being the worst city in America for African-Americans, the NAACP convened a press conference, had over 100 people attended. All of our state legislators attended, our now-current mayor did. We had African-American clergy, representatives from the United Way, Erie Community Foundation. We're just asking government who has the opportunity.
Gary, your time has expired. I'm sorry.
Of sitting down with these people to give the people a voice at the CBA table. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard tonight? Seeing no one come forward, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May fourteenth meeting? Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mr. Horton. Are there any proposed changes or corrections of those minutes? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the minutes, Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Next are reports of county officials. This is a little different, so I'm glad I noticed I didn't skip over you. Does the county executive wish to make any kind of report tonight?
Not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Members of council, Mr. Horton had expressed an interest to give a report tonight.
First, I'll give the personnel report. Personnel committee met on Thursday, May twenty-fourth.
Thank you. I'm glad you did that.
And we agreed to put Items D and E under New Business on tonight's agenda. And I believe I'll wait till...
Actually, yeah, let Mrs. Fatiga do her finance report.
All right.
You've got to make sure we have that corrected, because I'll keep skipping it into the future, I'm sure. I apologize.
Thank you. Excuse me. The Finance Committee met on May twenty-fourth and agreed to put under Old Business Items A and B and under New Business Items A, B, and C, as well as Items G through T. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions, by the way, for either Mr. Horton or Mrs. Fatiga regarding those two meetings? Okay, next are reports of other members of council. Mr. Horton?
Good evening, everyone. It's been 205 days since the twenty-four Wall Street article declaring Erie, Pennsylvania as the worst city in America for blacks. Sadly, the silence has been deafening. Nothing has been said, much less done. Tonight, this body, in previous meetings, I've came and I've expressed to you how I was ashamed that I hadn't put forth anything and that my colleagues hadn't and that the administration hadn't and that the city hadn't. Well, tonight, this body, I hope, stands prepared to make a bold and strong statement. It's a statement that has been made in communities all over America, particularly urban cores, where development and gentrification have to find ways of balancing. And so as we sit just blocks away from the poorest zip code in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and we sit in Erie County, in the city of Erie proper, where two of the high schools have already closed and been combined, so we have three high schools combined into one. We have overcrowded in the classrooms, and although they've done a phenomenal job with what they've had, the fact of the matter is, is our school district is in trouble. 100% of the children are eligible for free or reduced lunch. I submit to you that that's not the case in Mill Creek, and that's not the case in Fairview, and that's not the case in Waterford or Corey or anywhere else. And if it were in those places, I would hope that we would all be as upset as we should be about it happening in Erie, because those aren't City of Erie children; those are our children. And God says, as much as you do for the least of us, then that's what we do for Him, and so we come and we pray and we say all the nice things, but nothing gets done. And this situation didn't happen overnight. We didn't get here overnight. And so along with submitting the resolution in hopes of Erie County passing it, I believe that Erie County and my colleagues have the foresight to see that this wouldn't just be a vehicle just for Erie County. And we're asking our state delegation to, you know, to accept this resolution if it passes and to lobby on our behalf, and we believe that instead of just always coming in, it's easy for me to come and give you the roll call, what the problem is, but very rarely does someone come with a solution, and so I've offered a solution tonight, and it's not one that would just fit Erie County. I believe that it's one that would fit all urban core areas throughout the Commonwealth, and I hope that my colleagues will agree with me this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Anderson. I apologize. I actually have several reports from different committee projects that we've worked on, and we haven't had time to get to them in caucus. I'm just going to give brief overviews. One is the Election Committee that we've been working on, as we have brought forward to the public several months ago, that we're going to have to deal with the mandated issues of new election equipment next year. I want to thank Doug Smith and his staff for being on top of that, and we're beginning to meet with different vendors who are going to have to be certified by the state, but then one of those we're going to have to choose for new election equipment, which we'll have to have in place next year. So I'm pleased of where all of us have been on that and working together, and I think we're out in front of that issue right now, and we will do the best on behalf of the citizens of Erie County. With that being said, I also wanted to bring to the attention of council that we had sent out a letter about six weeks ago in regards to the issues concerning dairy farmers and Walmart giving the pink slips to local farmers. And just last week, we learned even more troubling news, that Meadowbrook Dairy, as a processing plant, was going to be closing. In the letter, we had urged the federal congressional and senate delegations to get on top of the issue and begin to look for solutions. I was able to have a meeting with Senator Toomey's office, and today, Councilwoman Fatiga and myself had a meeting with Senator Casey's office, talking about ideas and possibilities of what we can do to help the dairy industry in our local community, and I think we've made some progress in that area as well. And then finally, I wanted to report on LURDA. We're beginning to work on a LURDA plan in conjunction with the city of Erie. We were able to have a meeting with the city. Councilman Horton and Councilwoman Carol Lowell and myself attended that meeting on behalf of council. There were representatives from city council, the school district. Mr. Sparber was there on behalf of the county executive, and the mayor's office was also represented. We discussed several issues about some of the ground that we could come together on and share our common interests and concerns with our community, particularly with the school district, and I think Mr. Horton has expressed it tonight, and he expressed it at that meeting, the concern that we need to have for the school system in the city of Erie and how that is going to be impacted by LURDA and how LURDA can help reignite and impact the Erie School District. So I think we made some steady progress at that meeting. There was nothing definitive that came out of there. There was some committee work that was going to be done to bring back some more definitive options to the table, and after that meeting, I think we'll have a fuller report for all of the members of council, if, in fact, we need to have a public hearing at some point. I think we should do that and let the community know how hard we're working on their behalf and that there are good and positive things happening. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of council wish to make a report? Hearing, moving on to Old Business. Second reading of ordinance number forty-four, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number forty-four, twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen Gaming Fund Budget, revised revenue and expenditures of $1 million, removal of restriction and creation of line items for the Erie Land Bank.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes. I toiled with this long and hard because I'm still not understanding just the full what the Board of Directors are of the land bank or how it's going to interact with the city, and I'm really having a hard time just forking over $1 million without having some clarification. And so I'm really unsure, even at this late moment, how I'm going to vote on this. Very troubling to me. I think we put the cart before the horse, as we often seem to do, but we'll get better at that, I'm sure, as well. I just wanted to speak on it, that this is, you know, being, filling the fiduciary responsibility of it, of the matter. It's just kind of hard to hand over $1 million to a body that's still under development. That's my comments.
Any further discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance forty-four, Mr. Horton?
I'm ready.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number forty-five, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number forty-five, twenty-eighteen, amending ordinance fifty-nine, two thousand and four, Erie County Human Relations Commission to add additional protected classes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Leone. Is there any discussion?
I believe this has to be amended, Mr. Chairman.
I believe that reflects the general will. Correct.
What did they have, five years?
Right.
They had ten years instead of five. Also make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Leone. Is there a second?
Second.
That'll change the lookback for landlords from a five-year lookback to a 10-year lookback. So moved by Mr. Leone. It was seconded by Mrs. Fatiga and Mr. Horton. Any further, actually, any discussion on that amendment? Mr. Smith, roll call on the amendment, please.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yeah.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Any further discussion on ordinance number forty-five as amended or further proposed amendments? Mr. Smith, roll call, please, on ordinance number forty-five as amended.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leone?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to consider second readings for Items A, B, C, D, and E.
Moved by Mr. Leone to amend tonight's agenda, seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion regarding amending tonight's agenda? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the motion, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Moving on with New Business, then. A second reading of ordinance number seventy-three, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number seventy-three, twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen Liquid Fuels Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $20,000 from emergency funding for Harbor Creek Township Project.
So moved. Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance seventy-three, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Second reading of ordinance number seventy-four, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number seventy-four, twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen Capital Project Fund, revised expenditures of $995,215, and creation of line item for purchase of new mobile and record management systems.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mrs. Fatiga. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance seventy-four, Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number seventy-five, please, and title only.
The second reading of ordinance number seventy-five, twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen General Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $36,000, and waiver of purchasing code for Choose Erie Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Leone. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Anderson.
I just wanted to make a comment, although I support the efforts of what they're working on. We did have a discussion with the county executive and her committee in which I think we were strongly in support that their logo be Choose Greater Erie, and we had expressed that to them at the last finance meeting. I just think that that's falling on deaf ears, and I would hope that they would see the value in using that, choosing Greater Erie, as we are all a part of, not only the city, but all of Erie County. And so I would just make that comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I wholeheartedly agree. I think the whole panel does agree on that matter. Any further discussion?
On ordinance seventy-five, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Second reading of ordinance number seventy-six, please, and title only.
Second reading of ordinance number seventy-six, twenty-eighteen, thirty-six, twenty-eighteen General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $16,173 for a school resource officer position at the Erie County Technical School.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Leone. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance seventy-six, Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Second reading of ordinance number seventy-seven, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number seventy-seven of twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen Appointed Officials Salary Ordinance, County Solicitor.
So moved. Moved by Mr. Leone.
Second.
Or seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance seventy-seven, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton? Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
First, I'm sorry, first reading of ordinance number seventy-eight, please, and title only.
A first reading of ordinance number seventy-eight, twenty-eighteen, thirty-seventh, twenty-eighteen General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation... appropriation of $16,030 for change in non-bargaining pay plan manager of facilities and operations.
Possible adoption of Resolution Number 37, please, and title only.
Resolution Number 37, 2018, ratifying the sale of county real property, parcel number
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mrs. Fatika, is there any discussion regarding that resolution? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
On the sale of parcel, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, excuse me.
Possible adoption of Resolution Number 38, please, and title only.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Fatika.
I want to thank the, all of the members of council that supported this resolution in 2013, and I don't have to say anymore because during the public hearing, somebody already gave all of my good arguments, so, thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Chairman.
Can we save the comments till after it's on the table, please? The only reason I cut you off is I don't want to have it expanded.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Thank you, if we could have it entitled only, then we can make all the comments we want, thank you.
Resolution Number 38 of 2018, in support of the expansion of the emergency vehicle preemption system in Erie County.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika, it's seconded by Mr. Horton, any discussion, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to commend Councilwoman Fatika for the work that she's done on this particular resolution, and I know this is something that she's worked on for a long time and spent many hours with, so I just want to commend you for your work on this tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, anybody else? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
On Resolution 38, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of Resolution Number 39, please, and title only.
Resolution Number 39 of 2018, Erie County General Authority Not to Exceed $5,300,000 Tax-Exempt Note, The Ball Pavilion Project.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mr. Horton, is there any discussion? Roll call please, Mr. Smith.
On Resolution 39, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Without objection, if we could, is there a motion to approve Resolutions Number 40, 41, 42, and 43 with one motion, they all deal with the same issue, which is extending the life of the authority 50 years?
I'll second.
Okay, so moved by Mr. Leone, I think it was seconded first by Mr. Horton, any discussion regarding those four resolutions? Okay, Mr. Smith, roll call on those four, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Possible adoption of Resolution Number 44, please, and title only.
Resolution Number 44, 2018, urging the inclusion of community benefit agreement language in project funding under the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Anderson, is there any discussion? I believe you want to amend, do you really not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we pass this resolution with the amendments that were brought forward in caucus and agreed upon by council members.
We have a clean version of that for the public, they didn't substantially change the document so much, is there any further discussion on, actually, it's moved by Mr. Anderson, is there a second to that amendment? So move. Seconded by Mr. Horton, is there any discussion regarding that particular amendment? And there was probably five or six of them, Mr. Anderson offered our comments, Mr. Horton?
I'd like to just take the opportunity to thank Attorney Tyler Rico and Councilman Anderson, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Councilman Anderson and Attorney Tyler Rico, and of course, our wonderful staff, Doug Smith, Lionel Wright, and Dana Breeder, we submitted three or four different versions of it, but, you know, all together, the ant saved the elephant, and it's wonderful things happen when we're able to work together, and this document is a testament to that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, any further discussion on this particular amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Anderson.
I just wanted to say to Mr. Horton, I know that this is an issue that you've been passionate about, you at times have been very spirited about, and I understand that spirit and passion, I commend you for the work that you've done and sticking with the efforts, and I think we have a great document here tonight to move forward, and I'm honored to help you move that forward tonight.
Any further discussion? On the amendment, roll call please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Any further discussion on Resolution Number 44 as amended? I will only say that at one time, this council approved a project labor agreement resolution, actually, it was an ordinance form, I believe, to be included in all public projects that we financed, and we were told that that was a bad thing to do, that it would curtail development, et cetera, that never materialized, and I believe all of the negativity that may surround this particular resolution from some circles will meet the same fate, I don't think this is something that is to be feared, and I think we'll have a lot more benefits that even we may not see at this particular moment, so it has my support. Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Lisa Austin to the Erie County Planning Commission? So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Leone, is there any discussion regarding this appointment? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
On the appointment, Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
That appointment is defeated, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Maria Gelman to the Human Relations Commission?
That's withdrawn.
I know, but it's on the agenda, so at least it wanted to be addressed.
I'll tell you what, can I remove that?
No, just, just no action, it won't be, so if nobody moves it forward, it'll just die right there, okay, very good, next, Mr. Leone.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move in one motion, the possible sale of parcels from the repository as listed on our agenda, Items Q, R, S, and T.
Moved by Mr. Leone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson, is there any discussion regarding the sale of those parcels? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Move the adjournment.
Council stands adjourned, good evening, everybody.